Good evening, everyone. With the time being 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday, February 8th, 2022, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order as that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the world which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded, both video and audio, and will be posted on the school district website. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the January 25th, 2022 meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Member on MAFRA?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is a superintendent's report. Good evening, Dr. Goguen.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see everybody. I will start with my personnel update. I'm pleased to let you know that we have hired, it says Judith Powell in your notes, but it's Judith Bronze. She just got married. As the interim assistant principal for the Webster Middle School, she'll be starting on February 28th. We have received the resignations from Steven Menard, grade seven teacher over at the Webster Middle School, and Courtney Ordway, an ABA over at the Webster Middle School effective February 18th. And we have transferred Ms. Susan Stitch from the academic interventionist into the grade seven math over at Webster Middle School for now. I'm pleased to let you know that Ms. Perangeli and myself and our OPM and our designers presented the Bartlett High School renovation update to the selectmen. I know we'll speak a little bit more about it in your report as well. I wanted to let you know that they were, provided ample positive feedback for the work that we're doing, and they enjoyed our presentation, and we were pleased with their feedback. It was a very nice presentation. We are hitting the road with the Bartlett High School renovation communication. We have some, a very rigorous schedule in front of us. We would like to remind parents who are watching, community members who are watching, tomorrow night, we will be doing a presentation over at the Bartlett High School at 6:00 p.m. We also will be presenting to the selectmen via Zoom on Thursday night. And then on Saturday, we will be doing a parent-community Zoom link presentation. So we have an aggressive communication plan to make sure that people in the community have a chance to ask questions, see what's going on, and provide feedback. And we're really excited about that. More to come. In the attendance update, I want you to just take a peek at the numbers. We've seen a dramatic increase in our attendance. We are, coincidentally, that is in line to seeing less COVID in our schools. So the data is there for you to see. I'll just point out a couple examples. On January 20th, there were 166 students absent for various reasons, COVID being one of them, but on February 3rd, there were only 46 students absent. So that's a great improvement. Similarly, over at the Webster Middle School on January 20th, where we had 140 students absent, on February 3rd, there were only 43. And at Bartlett High School on January 20th, there were 126 students absent, and on February 3rd, there were 51. So certainly, we're seeing students and staff back in school healthier, and we are very pleased about that. In your report, I also just have a January update on reportable incidents to the state from each school. Park Avenue had seven reportable incidents, Webster Middle School had 17, and the Bartlett High School had five. In my enrollment update, we are on February 2nd servicing 1,711 students. That's exactly the number for our October 1st report, but the number has fluctuated at each school. So any questions on that before I move on?
Just a quick question about the behavioral incidents. Seventeen at the middle school, is that high?
Ms. Peterson, would you consider 17 reportable incidents at the Webster Middle School high?
I would, yes.
So at the last meeting, I think Ms. Peterson talked a little bit about interventions that are in place at the Webster Middle School. And I think one of the things that we're doing as a district leadership team is really taking a look at how we are building a cohesive model of support for our students around behaviors. And we recently had the May Institute come and speak to the district leadership team about collecting data and working through the PBIS teams at each school to develop a consistent understanding of incidents and then responses. So I think this team collectively is working to remedy some of that. And it's not just this team, it's actually everybody who works in the schools, the counselors and the teachers and the paraprofessionals, with really being able to de-escalate situations before they become incidents and then pick up the red flags that students often provide us to have a proactive plan rather than a reactive plan. So I think I will speak on behalf of all the principals, and we want that model of a proactive plan, and there is nothing more important than safety in the schools, and that learning environment is impacted when that code of conduct is not consistent or consistently followed by everybody. So I think we're hoping to see progress in that area, and I will continue to share those numbers with you so that you're informed.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. And just in talking about safety, we recently had our district safety meeting, and our discussions included many topics with regards to making sure that we're compliant with our fire drills and our lockdowns and our evacuations and, you know, into details about intercom systems and making sure that they're functioning and working. And we want to make sure, later on in this meeting tonight, Chief Shaw is joining us. We work very closely with the police and the fire department and the EMS, so we consider them part of our team. So safety continues to be a priority for everybody. With regards to curriculum and our literacy reset, we held a literacy district team meeting without our Hill consultants facilitating the meeting this past week. And we met, we felt it was really important to meet as a team, and that team is, consists of teachers and administrators from each of the buildings, to really put together a vision statement for the literacy work, the why behind we're doing it, so that everybody can explain the same message. That vision statement is a work in progress. We are meeting tomorrow to complete that, and it links to our existing vision and mission statement. And from there, we will be working on prioritizing the needs assessment and then looking at what goals we're going to tackle and in what order we're going to tackle with that comprehensive literacy plan that we're trying to put together. And that's exciting work because, because it involves many different voices. It's not a directive, here's the vision statement, it's what do you want to see happen? And I think it was a pretty productive meeting with people putting their spin on what we're doing. And everybody has a different role, so everyone's coming from it from a different angle, and our end result will be a collaborative statement that we all can stand by. So I was excited from, from the work that everyone was doing. I have kind of shared a little bit about the Bartlett renovation project, which we're excited about, and so I'm not going to go into that, any more detail on that. I do want to let you know that I have contracted with NESDEC to assist with the hiring of the next Bartlett High School principal. This search will really include a thorough development of a successful candidate profile, developing a timeline to meet our needs, the advertisement and recruitment of candidates and screening, and I will keep you abreast of that work. Unfortunately, we were notified that we will not be receiving the Project Based Learning Grant that we applied for, for Bartlett High School, but that is not deterring us from moving forward with our Innovation Pathways and our development of what we have to do. So in terms of the work that we're doing, it's complex. I know that we have Abigail Callahan, who is our project manager for Innovation Pathways. We had a brief meeting today just about next steps with PR-ing what is going on. And then we have a meeting that we just set and invited both the high school and middle school staff to come to, to be a part of developing that plan. We had some teacher input and some really great ideas about bringing the middle school kids over to the advanced manufacturing lab and having them actually see what's going on prior to their course selections and giving them that detailed visual experience over at Bartlett. So more to come on that. Our community partnerships continue to be there. Webster is such a very giving community. Recently, MAFRA reached out to me to set up a meeting at the end of February with our team at the high school and counselors. They really want to develop a mentor program. They have six to eight slots for jobs open, and they are seeking to work with us on this mentor program where they'd be, would be coaching and working with our students to have them successfully graduate, graduate and then move on to a job over at MAFRA. So more to come on that. Any questions with my report?
To the chair.
Yes, Mr. Adamopoulos.
Considering the principal's search, is NESDEC going to be acting as a consultant with the screening committee, or are they going to be doing most of the search themselves and just bringing us final candidates?
No, there is a, there is a screening committee, there's a profiling, they're managing, they're managing the search, so they'll be working and guiding. They're not making any of the final decisions. That would be the superintendent's in conjunction with a preliminary screening committee. So they walk you through a very comprehensive process, which includes developing the profile, community outreach, working with the preliminary screening committee, working with the superintendent, and really doing some recruiting. I will say, after this year of trying to fill a number of positions in our district, school spring has run dry for us, and so we really need to take different approaches. And NESDEC's been around for a long time. They run, they do superintendent searches, they do principal searches, and they do it in multiple, many states. So they have a deeper pool to help select candidates from. So they may provide some candidates to us, but all candidates have to apply. They'll be putting together a brochure about the position and some of the exciting things that are going on in our district, like the building project and the innovative pathways and doing a lot of advertising.
Has that preliminary screening committee already been formulated?
No, nope. This is all new. So the timeline is really to go through this process with them, this guided process, and anticipated having a candidate by the end of April or May, just in time to do some nice transitioning.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions or comments for Dr. Goguen?
Thank you.
Does that conclude your part?
That concludes my report.
Perfect, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the business manager report. Good evening, Mrs. Perangeli.
Good evening, thank you. I'll start out tonight with the school building committee update. As Dr. Goguen said, we've been very active, not just as a committee, but as a small group promoting the project. We have some good news. We did get feedback from the MSBA and from DESI in regards to our special ed programming. The feedback that we received was very good. They had a couple of questions. I think they only had two comments on the special education portion, which we will be answering any questions that they have about our programming or space and working to get that information back to them with our architects and our OPMs. But everything we've gone through has been very positive. It is very clear to us that the state is supporting our project and really wanting to see us move forward with the renovation project, so that's really exciting. We have 14 days to respond. I believe that 14 days is up next week, and we will make sure that gets in on time. The MSBA will be voting the project on Wednesday, March 2nd, I believe it is. So we look forward to that. We're really excited about that. The building committee will be meeting on Tuesday, February 15th, this month, instead of our typical Thursday, to review final information with our building committee and our OPM. So that's good, everything's going along as scheduled. And as Dr. Goguen said, we have just been really extremely busy with our community outreach. We were excited, we had our first run-through with the selectmen. We wanted to start there last week. And I have to say, all of our presenters, Dr. Goguen and our OPM, Ken Gallett, and the architect Kent Kovacs, really did a phenomenal job explaining and walking us through the whole educational programming and how we got to where we are today and what, and how the building was designed and what we're looking at. They couldn't have done a better job, and it was really received well by the selectmen. Before we left that meeting, Mr. Becker, the chairperson, said that the selectmen really support the project. So we're happy about that. We are making the rounds. We've got, as Dr. Goguen said, we have meetings this week. We have Wednesday, Thursday, Saturday. We will also be, we're going to finance committee on Thursday night. We're also going to be going senior center in March. We have dates planned out. We're sharing out information wherever we can. We're tweeting, we're Facebooking, we're putting it on the website. We've got posters up around town in our school buildings and our public buildings.
And the principals sent it all out in their communications?
The principals sent it out. There was a one-call that went out. So we are trying to reach everybody. We want as much attendance as we can get because we want people to be informed and we want to answer all questions. The last thing we want is people going to a ballot or to a vote not understanding what we want to do and why we want to do it.
We will be presenting it to the staff as well on Friday during our half-day. It's part of our half-day session at each of the schools, so we will have small group meetings at each school to show them that.
So all of that information is on our website under the district page. There is a building committee page that outlines everything, so we will keep you informed, but we look forward to getting out there, and we are excited to talk about the project, something that we like talking about. So, you know, if you, if you spread the news, tell somebody to call in, we're doing it multiple ways. There's going to be Zooms and there's also going to be in-person. So if people are uncomfortable still coming out to an in-person meeting, they can always jump on a Zoom. Doesn't matter which one they attend, as long as they get informed. Any questions about the project?
To the chair. I'm just looking at the dates that are on here on the notes. So we have the parent community forum tomorrow night. Then it says the finance committee's on the same night. Should that be February 10th?
Thursday, yes, it's on Thursday.
Then there's no date for the parent community forum. It just says February.
What are you looking at?
The superintendent notes? It just says Zoom meeting on February at 11:00 a.m.
Oh, that's my error. Yeah.
It says February. We have a schedule online with all the dates and what?
That's the 12th.
12th, okay, thank you.
But there is a calendar schedule that was in your last packet, and we can email it again to you.
Anything else? Continue on. The next item is the town administrator's search. It's really not a search any longer. We are happy to say the town administrator did come in and sign his contract, so he is official. His, I believe his first official day is tomorrow. We did get to see him downtown last week when we were doing the presentation, and I believe he might have been in town today a little bit, meeting with some people. But his official first day is tomorrow. We welcome him and look forward to future conversations. I know Dr. Goguen is reading out, and we'll be setting up an initial meeting to sit down and welcome him to the community, to the school department, and hit the ground running with some financing and town discussion. But we look forward to that, and we welcome him. And then the next item is the Park Ave, school water heater up. I'm happy to say that that project is now 100% complete. It went off without a hitch. He was waiting for some last piping to come in, which did come in. I'm happy to say they did not have to rip down the wall. They squeaked through. I think they had about an inch clearance, and the work went very well. We were very happy with the work that the contractor did, who won the bid on that, Nick Latuga. He was very professional, came in, did the job, and I'm just happy to say it was all inspected and everything was perfect. So hopefully, this water heater will hold up a little better than the last one. We'll get a little more than five years out of it, I hope, and everything is running smoothly over there. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Perangeli.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is the principal report. Good evening, Mr. Thomas.
Good evening, Chair Sadeke. How are you?
I'm good, thank you, and you?
I'm well, thanks. The first item on my report is our Nichols Leadership Academy field trip, which was held. We've been kind of prohibited from doing that with the COVID restrictions recently, so this was the first time that we had all our cohorts, freshmen through seniors, on campus at the same time. So it's very exciting that the freshmen and the classmen got a chance to kind of hang out with the students who had been through there before. And normally, they would rotate through two or three different workshops, but because of the number, there were 45, 46 students that were there. What they did was they practiced elevator pitches to college admissions officers. So the younger students were able to see the upperclassmen who had more experience with this, and the people from Nichols were very generous in saying, even though you're not planning on coming to Nichols, this is what a college admissions officer is going to want to hear from you, this is a timeframe. So they had a time limit and everything that they get to go through it, so it was very good experience for those kids. Second thing I wanted to talk about was the High School Students in Education Partnership Program, and that is funded through Mass Hire Central, but it's actually administered by Mass Hire in Boston because they have more experience with payroll. They do a huge amount of summer programs. So we've been able to procure funding for, of the 20 students, up to 120 hours each at 1425 an hour. So we started with our Future Teachers of Administration, Future Teachers of America cohort, of which there are 13. So some of them are in current stations already, which they will be paid, and some of them, as I was talking, have already reached out to Robin and Heidi looking for opportunities to after-school tutoring, maybe supporting their enrichment programs and things like that. So it's very exciting. These are students who are preparing to be teachers. The process was that they had a packet. We had to get their email addresses and their parents' email addresses. They got a packet sent to them. Once everything was completed properly, they were put on the payroll. So now they have to fill out time sheets. They get verified by Mrs. Granger. She scans them in, emails them to the Boston office, and depending upon what the students chose, they either get a check cut or they get a direct deposit from them. So we do that weekly. And some of the students are in a current station, some of them were in one last semester, but those students can still reach out and do different things together at these schools. So I was talking to Heidi, and that's where most of our students are currently. So some of our kids already have relationships with some of our students and teachers who are looking at tutoring programs, enrichment, and things like that. So very exciting. And the last thing, we're in February, but for seniors, the clock is really ticking. So there's a lot of senior activities, and one of the things that I wanted to point out there in our, we put them on our webpage, I emailed them to the parents, our local scholarships. As Mrs. Goguen alluded to earlier, the generosity of Webster is like legendary. There's over 30 local scholarships that are there, and that list keeps growing. They're, they're also on the seniors' class of 22 Google Classroom page that the guidance councils keep up. But I know Chief Shaw has one from the paternal order of the police, that's one of the things like that. But as we go through the applications each year, some of them, there are only two or three applicants. So I'm trying to get kids out there to, because even though the colleges are kind of reaching out now because their enrollment is down, and some of these may be like $500, but you can buy books, you can buy a lot of stuff, like everything adds up. So we're really trying to push out there to make sure that parents know what these scholarships are and the deadlines for them. The other thing that we're working on senior activities, they need to go on their classroom page and get their cap and gown sizes in. We just had our senior sweatshirt design go through, so now the students have to order that. And then our prom committee met yesterday. So I'm in constant touch with our SWICO principals so that we have a uniform policy regarding outside guests, the same way we did it with sports. So it looks like now everyone's planning on a normal prom season, and hopefully, our mask mandate will be removed by then. But even if it hasn't, one of the things that we're looking for is a venue that has indoor and outdoor capacity, so that students need to be able to go outside to eat, so they can take off their masks and stuff like that. That's one of the things that we're looking for. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Really exciting things going on this year for the seniors.
Yes.
Nice to have a sense of normalcy. Any questions or comments from the committee? No, hearing none. Well, thank you for your report, Mr. Thomas. The next item on the agenda under old business is a COVID protocols update. Dr. Goguen?
I didn't speak from the numbers. Past week, we had 13 COVID in one test. We're... ......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Thanks, Dr. Goguen. Any questions or comments from the committee?
To the chair.
Mr. Adamopoulos?
Let the masks. If DESI does remove the requirement, follows Connecticut, who said that the local level could dictate when they want to take it off, do we just handle it at our next meeting after that, or how, is there a timeframe of us addressing that?
Yeah, I think the way that we've been doing the COVID protocols is through the COVID leadership meeting, and so we'll meet as a COVID leadership team and, you know, make that decision, and then we'll talk to the, I'll talk to the Board of Health and see if they support that, and then we will proceed from there, and I'll bring that information to you. I think that every single person in the district will be thrilled to not wear masks. So I do foresee that that's coming, but we will wait to see what the state does. Right now, there is a mask mandate in place through the Department of Education through February 28th. I had predicted April or May, but I actually think it might happen sooner, so we'll see. You're welcome.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the monthly report on fundraising applications. Just as a reminder, the role of the school committee is not to approve fundraising activities, but simply to review them. I see we have one here for NJHS.
Yes, from the Webster Middle School. The Junior National Honor Society and the Student Council are hosting a semi-formal dance on March 11th to support their programs and build positive school culture.
Great. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Chair Sadeke, can I ask you to do an agenda adjustment and allow us to go to the item on the agenda where, to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Webster Police for the resource officers?
Sure, happy to.
Chief Shaw's sitting here?
Hi, Chief Shaw. Yeah, let's move on to the next... Yeah, let's move on to the next item under new business, the approval of the memorandum of understanding with the Webster Police for the resource officer. Good evening, Chief Shaw.
Anywhere you would like. Thank you for coming tonight. We have a memorandum of understanding with our police department for our school resource officer, and it recently has changed. So Chief Shaw is going to detail why and talk a little bit about our partnership.
Yeah, so not really much has changed. So this is a result of the 2018 Criminal Justice Reform Act. So this is a statewide, so before, every district's memorandum of understanding between their departments were similar, but they weren't all uniform. Now the state has enacted this school resource officer MOU that is uniform across all the states. It was a collabor, it was a result of a collaboration between EOPS, Attorney General's Office, law enforcement partners, and folks from DESI. There were several times where you could go in and give public input into it. And this is a result, this document is the result of that. It's 12 pages. It's really not a whole lot different from the current MOU that we have in place. Some of the highlights of it, it delineates the rules of the SRO and the administrative, especially when it comes to discipline and conduct in the schools. It outlines the process of selecting the school resource officer and the criteria that should be looked upon when selecting that school resource officer. It annotates a monthly or an annual review of the school resource officer. The biggest thing that a lot of the content in this that I saw is it talks about the information sharing between police and the school. And I'm going to be very honest with you. I don't know what half that stuff is when they start talking about certain chapters and sections when it comes to school. Like I know what an IEP is, that's about it. So there's some very specific and definitive guidelines that the MOU covers. But again, we also had that in place, I think, to a degree with our current MOU. So not a lot has changed, it's just a lot more, there's a lot more verbiage in this document. So I went through it. I have no problem with it. Like I said, it doesn't really change a whole lot. We have had a school resource officer in place in the Webster School District since as far back as when Brian Bonds was here. It was like early 2000s. And, you know, obviously, we all remember Detective Johnson. And it's just been, it's been a really good collaboration. The Criminal Justice Reform Act greatly took a lot of enforcement powers from police away as far as in dealing with juveniles. However, I do think that the relationship that we have, having an officer in the school district, is very beneficial. For instance, we had two juveniles this past week that didn't go home. And the information that Detective Whiting had was beneficial, was helpful to the officers in finding out where they could have gone, friends that they have. And it's a great resource for us to have. And it also fosters a really good relationship. It also allows us to incorporate some of our community programs, like our basketball, like our junior police academy. So it's really, I think that's really beneficial. Webster's a tough town. It's got a very, it's a very, it's a very interesting dynamic. We've got, you know, one half of the town is very, is almost like a suburban, almost like West Douglas. And the other half is almost like Maine-Southwester. And we have that, that dynamic that can be difficult to deal with. And it's nice having an officer to establish those relationships here in the school and to help collaborate between the school and the police department and to try to foster positive and beneficial relationships. So I feel like this MOU just further strengthens our relationship with the school. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Happy to take any questions that you may have. In case you didn't know, Detective Whiting has been the school resource officer for five years. He is stepping down. He's going to be assuming a full-time job in the detective bureau. But we do have his replacement. It's going to be Officer Dan Melhouse, potentially. We haven't finalized that yet. We still have some things to work out. But we'll be working with the school, with the superintendent's office, and getting him onboard. So we're going to do that. So the, with the idea that we can get him trained up and so he can shadow Detective Whiting while he's still the SRO. So he'll learn some of the ways and some of the ways he meets the staff and some of his duties day to day and some of the expectations from the superintendent's office, as well as the administrators from each different school. So we're hoping for a very seamless transition in that.
Thank you, Chief Shaw. Are there any questions or comments from the committee?
Through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Millitt?
I have a comment because I was in the classroom not that long ago. And I, after reading this document, I think some specific training needs to be done with the staff about their role in partnership with the SRO because there are things that shouldn't be done and things that should be done. I had no clue until I read this. So I really think there needs to be some kind of communication with staff about their role as a partner with the SRO and their job.
Well, this is a nice opportunity with another trainer, another SRO coming in and having Detective Whiting with the new SRO. I'm sure we will be meeting with the staff at each of the staff meetings to introduce the new SRO. So this is an opportunity to have those kind of discussions and really detail that. I just want to publicly thank the Webster Police because I think the partnerships that we have are really strong. And the memorandum of understanding is typically signed by the school committee chair, so that's why we're bringing it. But we are in constant communication. And I think that constant communication is proactive. So we know that we can rely on the Webster Police with a phone call. And, you know, that relationship building and having kids get used to seeing an SRO that they can talk to and knowing exactly what the SRO can do for discipline, because they don't do the discipline, and what the school should be doing is a really clean line that everyone needs to understand. So your point is well taken. Mike, I did pass it down there for you to sign. And if we just send it back down here, we'll have it for Chair Siddiqui later.
And I would just also like to reiterate our thanks. You know, it's great to have the relationship between the police department and the school. And I know the kids look forward to seeing Officer Whiting, and I'm sure the same dynamic will continue with Officer Melhouse. So it's great. So thank you very much for your dedication.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Right. See if I can remember where we left off. So do we need a motion to approve this, or is it, we need a vote, Lori? So I will entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Webster Public Schools and the Webster Police for the resource officer.
The most.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
I'm Brad Hopf.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your time. I appreciate it. And thank you for helping out.
Thank you, Chief Shaw. I will send it to you electronically tomorrow.
I think we're going back to fundraising applications. Maybe we finished that one, right? Okay, perfect. So the next item on the agenda is going to be the Bartlett High School Improvement Plan update.
Good evening again. I believe you have copies.
Yes, good evening again.
Okay. So this is from September to January. Obviously, some things are in progress. Overall goal, school priority one was data-driven decision-making to improve instruction. We needed to implement some planning time to make sure departments had time to plan and look at their common assessment. So we have a common planning time once every seven days in a seven-day rotation of the mass schedule. The statewide system of support, SaaS, had suggested a template, and they actually borrowed that from us. It was already widely in use. All CPT meetings are completed on the Google forums and shared with administrations. And individual unit plans are submitted monthly. If a class course covers more than one unit in that time span, they submit more than one unit plan. We had a staff meeting today, and all unit plans were collected. Regarding specific techniques and strategies to promote rich student discourse, this has been a priority in Bartlett High's school improvement plans for some time. So during our August PD days, we looked at the MCAS results from all the subject areas. ILT developed three criteria to focus on. As noted in the documents, we had over 150 walkthroughs occurred. And then we tabulated their results. In our plan, we talk about an iterative process. So we looked at what we saw, what people were doing well, and what our next focus areas were. We kind of piggybacked that with some of our professional development around student discourse. So in the future, our ILT walkthroughs will be focusing on the quality of student discourse that's observed. I want to note that when DESI came to observe on the 26th of this month, they came to the same conclusion that ILT had in that our essential questions and learning targets were being posted in student-friendly language and being taught to at nearly 100%. And that was one of our areas that we set. So we're going to focus on student discourse from now on. Improving instruction, Dr. Gogan has talked about our clean literacy. For this year, we decided that we're going to focus on ELA curriculum, and that's the Study Sync curriculum. So again, we had a lot of PD opportunities. The Study Sync screener was given us start of the year to establish a baseline for students. And then we've been using our end-of-unit assessments. One of the big changes that we did this year is we have two teachers that are teaching freshmen and sophomores only and two teachers that are teaching juniors and seniors. That provides for more alignment and more common planning time. The Hill Consultants conducted a school-wide needs assessment in November and are scheduled to share their findings with the staff this Friday. The Hill Consultant is on-site one time per week for all ELA teachers. The academic interventionist and the ELL teacher and then is scheduled for a virtual session the other week with the same teachers. I mentioned the grade level alignment has been achieved, you know, it's monitored. And then school priority number three was student sense of belonging. P to build common understanding of cultural responsiveness in curriculum. The curriculum review process is underway. It's part of the budget program of study course selection process. Cultural responsive review materials was part of the novel selection process when Study Sync was implemented over the summer. 3.2 is examine and revise criteria for AP honors dual enrollment in LA and Innovation Pathway admissions. Innovation Pathway admission by statute must be inclusive. Application essays are currently being designed and will ensure there is no GPA or other requirement that would inhibit participation. One of the things for the Innovation Pathways are the students who are enrolled there have to take two advanced courses. They can be our traditional AP courses, but they can also be some of our dual enrollment offerings, which we have expanded with QuinnSig as well as with Nichols. Project Leader courses do apply as advanced courses provided, and they can get college credit for them if they pass an end-of-year course. The Nichols Honors Academy was previously updated, established multiple means for students to provide feedback. The student wellness survey is conducted weekly. Teams tabulate and convert to a spreadsheet to review trends. Part of our plan was that SaaS is going to develop student focus groups in a more detailed survey that has not happened yet. We're hoping to partner with them to get that done. And then conduct daily homeroom check-ins, including that weekly self-assessment during our eight-minute homeroom block. The homeroom block was incorporated in the mass schedule. It was cut to seven minutes to meet our time on learning. And teachers specifically provide time once a week for students to fill out the wellness self-assessment. So that's kind of a sense of where we are on our priorities. I have to say, our ILT walkthroughs were cruising along until we had some COVID absenteeism because we have to shift duties to cover classrooms and things like that. So we probably would have another 100 or so in the book if we didn't have the staff shortages that we had in that December, January timeframe.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Questions or comments from the committee?
Through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Millitt?
I have a comment and a question. I would like to see, because on your original, well, actually, on this one, it's establish multiple means for students to provide feedback about student learning experience. And your original goals also talked about student belonging. I'd like you to kind of think about that and see if there are, there are other ways besides filling out a form every week
Yes, absolutely.
for students to express how they're feeling about things that are going on in school, whether it's you meeting with concerned students or a comment box or a question, something other than just filling out a piece of paper every week.
Absolutely. One of the, one of our goals and one of our objectives, as I mentioned, was SaaS was going to conduct student focus groups around certain areas as well as surveys. So one of the areas that we were, they will be asking about is how they feel about the rigor of their assignments. And if we have trends, like, say, in absenteeism or tardies, trying to figure out from those students why they're tardy or why they're absent or things like that. But yes, there's multiple. And I know you do not have a child at the school. Kathy does, and Sheila does. And I can tell them that I speak to these students every single day, either before school, after school, or during lunch, every single day. So there are plenty of opportunities for students to come to me personally. They do not have to have a special request to make an appointment to talk to me.
I think it's something that could be part of this.
Yes.
Because the student voice could help you in a lot of different areas.
Especially at the high school level.
And it also picks up any issues that students may be having. And my, my question was, have you gotten a council together yet?
We have some candidates. It's been difficult. The, what the law states is the parent-teacher organization is supposed to elect a certain number of people from that body to the position. We do not currently have a functioning parent-teacher organization at the high school level. So I've been reaching out to some of the, like, boosters that have things in existence to try to solicit those folks. Because we, and then what the law actually says is you have to go before the school committee to get that selection process approved. I haven't been able to get any firm commitments from people to say, yes, I want to be on that and make that time commitment. But those are the people that I'm reaching out to. We do not have a PTL.
Right, I'm sorry to interrupt. I haven't seen anything on the website. So that was my concern
Okay.
because that's a place to reach out to parents or even if you do a newsletter.
Yes.
Home. Yours wasn't on there. Some of the other principals have copies of their newsletters on the website. So I didn't see that. I'm not saying you didn't do it in one, but I just didn't see it. Because I think there are parents, and I know it's difficult. People are working and, but I think you would find some parents and even community members. I think we just have to reach out a little bit more.
I've also been asking Mr. Perando, who has a different subset of parent contacts with many other coaches and stuff like that, to try to see if we can get a working group together.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Millitt. I think, you know, I would reiterate the, I think the feedback, Ms. Millitt, maybe that you were giving regarding students being able to provide feedback about their learning experience maybe isn't being addressed with the wellness survey. But, I mean, Mr. Thomas, I'm at some of the basketball games. You're there. I think you're probably everywhere and accessible to the students. It's hard to compile data from, from those types of interactions, but I would take those personal connections over, over data in some cases, right? In order to really have that sense of belonging and the feeling like your principal cares about you and wants to see your game and interact with you at lunch and that sort of thing. So I think there's a huge value to that. And I guess maybe the value of having that data-driven information will help, you know, formulate some of these goals and that sort of thing. What's the time? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
But SaaS has a lot of experience with those particular areas and putting together student focus groups. So when we designed this plan, that was one of the things that they said they would be happy to do. So they have a lot of expertise in, around the state in trying to look at So they have a lot of expertise in, around the state in trying to look at broad surveys and then hone in on and kind of follow up with it from that. But I agree, there probably should be a, a more formalized, detailed method of collecting information around different subjects other than personal wellness.
Right. That makes sense. And as far as, you know, the school council, I think we're probably better than halfway through the year at this point. And it's been an incredibly challenging year. Hopefully, we can get something put together, you know, maybe before the end of the, I don't know, before April vacation or something. Is that possible?
I hope so, yes.
Yeah. Great. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Thank you for your updates, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you.
Let's see here. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the F Y 23 budget. Good evening, Mrs. Perangeli. Is it Mrs. Perangeli or Dr. Gogan?
Well, we're a team.
You are.
Good luck separating us. I'll kick it off.
Go ahead.
Sure. So in your packet, you have a few different items. Tonight, I'm going to be giving you a presentation of our Chapter 70 numbers that just came out. In your packet, you should have also had a transfer, transportation letter that I typically send to the town hall as it impacts their budget. And then you should have a new copy of the budget, the corrected budget, with the right amount from F Y 22 to reflect the appropriate percentage. I'm going to give a high-level presentation of the foundation budget and just give an overview. I think you've all seen it. I'm not going to go into too much detail, but I think it's important to hear. I think it's important to understand how the budget is put together, how the state comes to these numbers, and it gives us a little perspective as a district as we're aware of. So last Wednesday, Governor Baker released his proposed state budget, which represents an increase of 485.3 million, or 8.8 across the state. Funding rose from 5.5 billion to 5.9. These are just preliminary estimates. As you know, the governor comes out, and then it has to go through the House and Senate, and then the joint before it comes to a final budget. But the preliminary estimates that we received are encouraging. The F Y 23 Chapter 70 program continues to implement the passage of the November 2019 Student Opportunity Act. If you remember, there was a team put together at the state level in 19 that took a look at how Chapter 70 was defined and really went through to try and update and make it more equitable across districts in Massachusetts. Five areas that impact Chapter 70 that were part of the student act that they looked at were benefits and fixed charges. That's things like health insurance and stuff like that. They looked at guidance in psychological services because they saw an increase in the need throughout the state for those services. Special education out of district tuition is another big one. They looked at E L learners, so our English language learners. They've seen an increase in the state, and they found that that was not an equitable funding source. And they took a look at the low income. This act includes rate changes above inflation. So all of these five areas are, had set rates. And what this is saying is they looked at changing those rates above inflation in these five areas. And 2021 was supposed to be the first year. That ended up being our base year because that's when COVID hit. We were on a trajectory that it was supposed to increase 1/6, 2/6, up, up over seven years. And since COVID and the projections at that time with our economy shutting down, took a real hit, Chapter 70. So they considered that the base year and started with the F Y 22 year. So what this is saying is that F Y 23, it looks at 2/6 of closing the gap because we're in the second year of that. Some of the foundation changes that are, have impacted our budget or our Chapter 70 money is the new employee benefits inflation rate. This is the health implant through the state. They take a three-year average of the premium and apply that to Chapter 70. So if you look at F Y 21, it was 2.3, and F Y 22, it was 2.78. That jumped to 4.51, the beneficial for Chapter 70. All other foundation budget rates, an increase of 4.5. This was the inflation rate. If you look at F Y 21, it was 1.9, and F Y 22, it was 1.4. This is another area. There is a cap in the law that says 4.5% is the highest. Inflation is actually higher than 4.5, but it's capped at the 4.5. So that's what we see that impacted our budget. Through the state, overall foundation enrollment decreased from 938,085 in F Y 21 to 907 in F Y 22, a decrease of 30.579. So they saw a decrease of 4% in foundation enrollment. So we've talked about our enrollment, looking at our enrollment across the state. They are all, everybody is seeing a decrease in enrollment. It is changing drastically with the state. That impacted our budget. If you remember, last year, we saw a decline in our enrollment, which impacted our Chapter 70 funds. So this has continued to happen across the state. They're seeing that decline. With that enrollment decline, you're going to see budgets, foundation budgets decline. There were 153 operating budgets, including 27 districts with a decline of more than 5%. Last year, Webster was in that 5%. And we saw a decline in our foundation budget of 2.77. I'm happy to say that's not the case this year. The formula is minimum aid. So the law states that we're going to receive the same amount of aid as we did the prior year. So we're never going to go less than the aid that we did the prior year. Prior year plus a $30 minimum. So if we saw a decline in enrollment, we would still get the base aid that we saw the prior year. This slide takes a look at our five-year trend in our foundation budget and our Chapter 70. You'll see in F Y 22, we saw a little dip there. It went down, but then you'll notice the nice jump that we see in F Y 23, which you would hope to see is a nice gradual increase across the board over the next few years. So hopefully, we can keep up with our enrollment, and our foundation will continue to increase. Through the law, the new enactment, it is, it's assumed in district specialized education enrollment to 5%. So it previously started at 4.75 for vocational students, and it started at 3.75 for non-vocational students. So what they're trying to do is increase these rates from 3.75 up to 4, and 4.75 up to 5 by 1/6 every year. So last year being the first year, this year, it's going up 2/6. It's being phased in. So this year, our rates for vocational student, special ed vocational student is 4.86, and for a non-vogue student, it's 3.6. So minimal change is there, but the goal is to get to 5% and 4% over the six years. Our low income is a big area where we saw a big impact in our Chapter 70 year. This act reinstates the low-income enrollment prior to F Y 17 based on 185%. Through F Y 17 and 22, it was based on 133% of the poverty level, the federal poverty level. So there's a big increase from 133 to 185% this year. District low income is based on three eligibility categories. The first one, they identify through all the state resources. Anybody with SNAP, Mass Health, foster care, this is all done through the virtual gateway. This is all done through our food service program. This year, they added back in, there were a lot of districts, when they went to the new method of collecting, that through the supplemental data, the virtual gateway, a lot of families, a lot of school districts felt that they weren't capturing the accurate amount of low-income students because they were no longer collecting applications. So what they allowed this year is they allowed school districts both. You can file through virtual gateway, but you can also collect applications because they felt like they were missing students. So now there's a new supplemental data process. We did not do that because we feel pretty confident that we're at our level, that we are capturing all the students. We don't have a lot of students on the cusp of being reduced. Everybody here, we're C E district, we're high, so we were not doing any of the supplemental data. And actually, I was on a webinar today with the state who went back to this. And I think statewide, after looking at the surveys, I think they said there was approximately 400 students that they might have identified through free and reduced forms, and many of those did not qualify for the benefit. So they feel like their new method of collecting the data is very accurate, but they're still giving the option for, for school districts if they feel like they're missing out. And then again, anybody who is homeless through the McKinney-Vinto program is automatically considered low, low income. With this act, there used to be 10 tiers of low income. They expanded that to contain 12 tiers. It's based on your low-income rate in your district. Webster rate, we are in group 11. We have 75.2% low income, so we at the high end of the tier. So how does this impact us? In the initial projections from the state, Webster will be seeing a 2.124677 increase in Chapter 70, or 14.49%, which is very favorable. Last year, we were looking at, I think, $60,000. There is an increase in the local contribution, which is the downside, which weights to 710. So this is good news for us.
Very good news.
And I'm just going to kind of give a high level over this. So we talked a little bit about how they come up with, you know, what is involved in the Chapter 70 formula. Chapter 70 formula is how they decide how much local aid, or is the formula that decides how much money we have. Now they talk about the foundation budget and the local contribution. Because when they look at giving this community funding, they take a look at what can the local community afford, and then they backfill with Chapter 70, right? So part of the foundation budget is the inflation rate, which we said is up to 4.5 this year, which has really impacted our budget. It's the enrollment, and it's the wage adjustment factor. Second part of that is looking at our local contribution, property value, income, and our municipal growth factor. These slides are difficult to see, and I did put them all on your desk for you. You have hard copies of all the Chapter 23, I'm sorry, F Y 23 foundation budget, and those should be in the new tab. If I didn't put it in your book, you have it on your desk, because I know they're difficult to see. But I think this is a great slide because this is a comparison of what our overall foundation, Chapter 70, budget looks like. The left side talks about our foundation budget, and I'll go over in a little bit how they get to the foundation budget. The required district contribution. It talks about minimum aid. And then on the right side, it compares our F Y 22 numbers to our F Y 23 numbers. This is always the first slide I go to when I'm looking at, and you know, when they come out and they say your, your foundation budget is out there, this is where I come. This is the first slide I always look at. We saw a change in our enrollment, which was an increase of 27. Our foundation budget actually went up 3.6 million from F Y 22. Our required district contribution that I said on the slide prior went up 710,000, and you can see the nice increase in our Chapter 70. Seven, so a $2.1 million increase. So our required net school spending for F Y 23 is 29,048. So these are good numbers. This slide is the determination of the town required contribution. So as I said before, you determine how much the town can pay, and then you backfill with Chapter 70. This is how they walk through this, and you have this in your packet. I'm sorry, I know this is a terrible slide to look at. But an impact here is our municipal revenue growth factor, which increased 3.9%. And really, when you get down, you can walk through, and if anybody wants to go through this, I won't go through this in detail here, but I'd be happy to sit if you wanted to sit and go through this and talk about this. Really, what you want is line number 26 down at the bottom, the F Y 23 required local contribution. It's at 13,317, 327, I can't see it from here. I should put my glasses on. They're on my lap. I got them. Sitting on my lap. So that 13 million is Webster's contribution, but it's not just Webster Public School. That is for Webster and Bay Path because we are part of a vocational program. So that 13 million needs to be divided between the two. The next slide shows you how that happens. It's based on your enrollment. So if you look at the left column where it says Webster, that's Webster Public Schools enrollment. And then the right side is Bay Path's enrollment. So you can see that Bay Path actually lost eight students in their enrollment last year, and we increased. So our required, their required contribution, it will probably be less than it was in F Y 22, where Webster Public Schools would be more. So the town needs to be accountable for 12,256,734 to the Webster budget. This slide is, can't even tell what's there, but it's in your packet. This is a summary of our foundation enrollment. This really breaks down to, and shows you exactly how they got to the foundation enrollment. Column one through seven is our in-district school kits, our kids that are in Webster. Column eight through 13 are students and percentages. So if you look at column eight, special ed, in district, this is the percentage of students in our special ed. It gives you percentage. So it's accounting for 73, but we know we don't have 7, we have more than 73 in-district special education students. So this, we get reimbursed for 3.86 if any of them are in vogue, or 4.86. A big contention problem is number nine. This is always brought up because this is special ed tuitioned-out students. It, it gives you 1% of your overall budget. So out of the 1,800 students that we have, we get one, reimburse 1% of those at the special ed rate, where we know we have 40, 42 students that are going out. This is giving you 1%. And then you see the rates for English language learners. Those are on a scale like low income. They come up with a set rate for a number of students that are in an elementary school. There's a rate for middle school students, and there's a rate for high school students. You will see our low income is where we saw the biggest bang this year. It increased from compared to F Y 22, we increased 181 students in low income. So that's a big number. That's a 14% increase in low income. The state in general saw 5%, 5% across the state. In Webster, we saw 14% increase. So, you know, is that all due to COVID? Is that going to adjust as we go through? That's the question a lot of people are wondering. How is that trajectory going to be in the future? Is that going to come back down? Is that going to level off? You know, is it all driven by COVID? I think a big part of it is driven by COVID, but we will see in the future. This next slide is, so we talked about how the town is required to give us a minimum amount. They can always give you more, but they are required to give a minimum. This slide is what we use to figure out our Schedule 19 and what the town actually has to supply you with income. So the town is allowed to, I always say it's kind of similar to writing off, but they pay for expenses on the school side that we don't pay for. Our health insurance, our retirees, there are charter schools, school choice, operations and maintenance, retirement, those are called Schedule 19 expenses. They're allowed to reduce them from the minimum contribution. So what we do is we walk through an exercise, and we say, what are those charges? And we know them. We track them. We file them on our end-of-year report every year, and then we project out to the next year. So what this slide does is it takes a look at our foundation budget, F29 million. It takes your minimum town contribution, your Chapter 70, and then it backs out those expenses. So we have 7.162 million that the town pays for in Schedule 19 expenses. What we do with that 7.1 is we subtract it from the 12 million the town is required to give us. So really, the town needs to give us, not the 12 million, they actually have to give us the 5 million. So they're not required to give us by law any more than that. So the minimum budget requirement, if we take that 5 million and we add it to our Chapter 78, our minimum budget requirement would be 21.85. There are, I don't know if there are any more in the state that get a minimum budget. That would be devastating to us, to have to live at that level. I don't think we could, and I don't know of anybody at the state anymore who is just getting the minimum budget. As you can see, what you would want to see is these numbers down the bottom being consistently going up over minimum. We took, over the past couple of years, especially in FY-21, we took a little hit there, and, you know, it drops our local contribution over minimum to 1.5, even with our 23.462 million budget request for this year. But we are in good shape. We are still over minimum, but we never want to get to that point where we're getting the base. That would be devastating to the school. This gives us our chapter 70 history in Webster. You see, last year, we only saw a 0.38% increase. That was $30 per student, the very minimum. This year, we are at 14.49%. If you take a look at our FY-22 budget versus our FY-23 budget, we are at a 4.48% increase, which is 1,5,530 over our prior year. And you see that we're getting, receiving 2 million Chapter 70. So I think as we work through the budget process with the town, we will be having further budget conversations, the way we stand as a community, and, you know, looking at the distribution of the aid. Because the town, the town increase is really not seeing any on their side of government aid. All the aid that's coming into the community is through our Chapter 70. So in the typical, it's been typical that any revenue in the past, we've been kind of splitting 70/30 as a community. So I just think we need to, maybe down the road, you know, this is initial. We always have to submit a budget to the town. By February 28th, we haven't even seen their budget yet. So they're just putting it together. They have a new town administrator on board. But I think, you know, as we go through, we might want to take another look at the overall picture of our budget and start having some bigger discussions. And I know that's a lot, and I know it's confusing. I mean, I live this every day.
You did a great job.
I still get confused sometimes. I have to really think about it as we go through. It's confusing. And I'm happy to sit with anybody if they want to go through this in more detail. But I am very encouraged by the Chapter 70 numbers that came out. I know it's early in the process. They still have to work through, but revenue pictures are good. I heard it again today on a webinar. I was on with Mass Budget and Desi. The numbers are looking good. All the federal money that's been brought in to our communities and, you know, all the assistance that families were getting, people were spending money. So that's a good thing. That is a good thing. So this is good news.
Thank you. I think you did a great job.
Losing.
It, I think the budget itself is an opportunity for us to continue the growth that we're working on in the district. And I think for the community at large, we've had lots of positive success working with the town on developing a budget that works for the school district. I think we're positioned really uniquely that we've come through COVID, and we are looking at a building project, and we've done a tremendous amount of work across the district with our programming and advancing in all areas, even during this, even during this crisis. So I know the conversations will continue with the new town manager, and, you know, we need to look to the future to see what positions that we are covering in ESAR that are really going to be needed in our budget, especially with this kind of opportunity with the Chapter 70 money. So we'll bring more information to you as we meet with the town.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee?
Chair, just for signing purposes, do we know when the, do we have our public hearing?
April 16.
When the tribe meeting is yet?
It was scheduled on March 16. But I don't, that was tentative. That was, that date was being held by the interim town administrator. Yeah, I'm not sure if the new town administrator is standing with that date.
I actually just have a question. It's great news. With this great news, is there any opportunity for us to, I think, looking at, in particular in the elementary and the middle school, there's some significant challenges that the students are displaying, right? As a result, partly maybe because of not having been in the classroom for a period of time, hybrid learning, relearning classroom norms, and all of that kind of thing. One of the things that I've heard pretty consistently is just having more bodies in the classroom. And I know that that's not been something that we've been able to build into a very stretched budget. But if we do have additional funds, is there an opportunity for us to be able to have either paraprofessionals or other people in the classrooms to differentiate learning, deal with kids that may need extra attention, that kind of thing, to really close some of these gaps?
Can I answer that?
Please.
I think your point is taken well, but right now, we have a lot of open positions, especially with paraprofessionals and ABAs. And I think if we were fully staffed with what our budget says this year, we might see a difference in some of the things. We are having a difficult time filling positions in terms of paraprofessionals and what the requirements are in the paraprofessionals contractual. They have to pass the Power Pro, or they have to have a bachelor's degree. So we're not finding that people are meeting that criteria. We are hiring paraprofessionals as substitutes and giving them an opportunity to take those tests. I think it's, I think your question is good, Kelly, but I also think just hiring more staff to have in the classroom and not having that structured program or what they're going to do can become problematic. I think all schools have been given ESAR funds to hire additional staff right now, which we've been trying to do when we can fill them, to close those gaps. That was the purpose of the ESAR funds. But there's no longevity to that in a budget. So we have to be careful, is what I'm trying to say. We have to be very thoughtful in the positions that we're putting into place, and because there will become, there will come a time when the budget is not what it is right now.
Yeah, it needs to be sustainable.
Right. So I think if all of our positions were filled, I think we'd see a big difference. And they are mostly at the elementary and the middle school, where we are, have a number of paraprofessionals, mainly at the middle school, that we haven't been able to fill. So I think there's conversations that we've had with talking to the para-union about the requirements, but it is in their contract language, what the requirements are. And I know a lot of districts have increased pay, and we have increased some pay, but we are in negotiations as well. So everything's kind of tangled together. But I do think those, that's what we're, that's the work that we're going to be doing now with this news just coming in. We want to be able to put the things that we're going to need in our budget so that we can sustain it, based on our needs.
Thank you, yeah. And I think some of, some of these needs may not be long-term. They may be just remedial in order to get, get things back on track. So I'm glad to hear that we're thinking creatively about how we can, you know, make some of those things happen, so.
Any other comments or questions from the committee?
We would just ask that the school committee vote to approve the presented budget, the proposed budget of 23,462,394, so that we can bring that to the town and continue our conversations there, noting that we do have a public hearing on April 16.
To the chair, I do have a question. So the budget with this increase in Chapter 70, has there been any staffing or changes to the budget, or any changes overall? Or has that not been incorporated yet?
Has not. So we're speaking with the budget that we've, as we work through with the town, and it's early in the state process, because this isn't approved, this is a very initial, and that could change. But it gives us an idea as to where we're going with our funding. So we will definitely have more discussions. Feel good about the budget, where we're at right now. You know, we will definitely have discussions. Here is room to prioritize the questions that we need to have as a community. Director, definitely have to send, always early. We have to send, how we know. Have more discussions, find out more. I don't even know. Last, asked, or on target? But what does that mean for our, having to discuss this? So those, I think, they've been waiting a little bit. On board, they're just starting to have the budget, they're in. But we will definitely, I think, the problem is going further.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion to approve the FY-23 budget request of 23,462,394 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Number on the floor?
Yes.
Number nine, for that?
Yes.
Number one?
Yep.
Yes, the motion passes. The next item on the agenda is, under new business, the acceptance of a donation of $650 from Global Partners for Park Avenue Elementary School.
Mrs. Perrangeli and I were thrilled to go accept a check from Global on the gas station on Route 16, where they raised money specifically for Park Avenue Elementary School through their car wash. And these funds will be donated to you. And again, we want to publicly thank our community, who surprise us every day with reaching out to us to see how they can help us, and this donation will be used over at Park Avenue Elementary School.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion to accept the donation of $650 from Global Partners for Park Avenue Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you pull the committee?
Number on the floor?
Yes.
Number nine, for that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you very much, Global Partners, for your donation. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the school year 2022 to 2023 school calendar.
Thank you. We worked collaboratively on this calendar, and when I mean collaboratively, it's the district leadership team, but even though the WEA doesn't have, we don't have to share the calendar, we always share the calendar with them to get feedback. And we tried once again this year to get a memorandum of understanding to start a little bit earlier so that the school year could end a little early, but this year, people said no. So we didn't go that route. So before you is the school year calendar for next year. I will give you a brief overview. We will put two new teacher orientation days in play this year. We did that this year. Just given the fact that we have a lot of new curriculum, we really want to onboard new staff with one day of curriculum development. Our district opening days would be August 29th, 30th, and 31. The first day for our students, grades 1 through 12, would be September 1st. The first day for pre-K and K would be September 7th. Parent-teacher conferences would be similar to this year, 16th and the 17th. Same with Thanksgiving break. Our holiday break would be December 23rd through 30th, and winter break in February, a spring break in April, with high school graduation on June 9th. And excluding any snow days, the last day of school would be June 16th. And then per the state, you have to add five additional days, and with the five additional days and the Juneteenth holiday, that 185th day would be on June 26th. The marking period is included in this calendar, and the principals have already put on the calendar their open house dates. We like to get the calendar out early for parents for planning purposes, for staff for planning purposes, and believe it or not, we start planning for next year now, based on this calendar.
I'm sure you do. Are there any questions or comments from the committee about the calendar? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2022 to 2023 school calendar as presented.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Number on the floor?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure a lot of time and effort goes into putting this calendar together. The next item on the agenda is a review, transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers.
You do have a transfer request over there, Ms. Idiki. We haven't had one in a while. There is a request to transfer $12,000 from the curriculum line into superintendent other to cover the principal search at the high school.
Any questions or comments about that? Do we need a vote for that?
Sure, yes, please.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer of $12,000.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you.